Welcome to the July 15th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. As per the open meeting law, we ask if anybody is recording this meeting. Is there anybody recording the meeting tonight? Being none, can we all rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I understand we have no public comments for tonight, so we will move on to our agenda and move along. First, we have a hearing on DMB Services LLC application for motor vehicle class two and auto repair license at 496 Washington Street. Is there a representative? Would you care to come up? Join us, please.
Hello?
Can you identify yourself and tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
My name is Dana Berger, and I've been doing paintless dent repair for 18 years now. I primarily do a mobile service, but at this point I'm trying to rent a retail location to perform my service.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Gladly.
Can I have a motion open the hearing, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. As I was saying, I do paintless dent repair. It's a form of bodywork that does not include any type of materials. I more or less push panels, I bend metals, and I'm looking to open a retail location at 496 Washington Street, as well as maintain the used car license there.
Okay, so you will be selling used cars there?
Correct.
Okay.
And primarily doing cosmetic repairs on cars.
Okay. So there won't be any welding or bodywork, painting, that type of thing?
No, no hazards material.
Body repairs. Okay. Any member of the board got a comment? Question? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not even sure who can address this, but under the DCG recommendations, it just says the applicant shall follow up with the sewer department regarding the floor drain. It's not real specific as whether it's required or it should be part of the application.
Okay. Dana, I don't know how to answer that.
I don't know if there's anyone from DCG who could answer that, but I just want to be clear as to what we need in the approval. If it does require a floor drain, is it an existing floor drain that needs upgrading? I'm just not clear on that.
Through the chair, if the DCG makes a recommendation specific to that, that the applicant needs to follow up, that means that there's still, generally that means there's still discussion as to what is needed and what isn't. So I would imagine that the vote that you would give would be contingent upon him completing the conditions that are listed here with the DCG. So if they haven't already met with the sewer commissioners or the sewer department, they would have to do that before we sign the license.
Thank you. Have you had a chance to meet with the sewer department yet regarding that?
I have not yet. My landlord did in 2016, and he brought the building all up into compliance, and I assume that those compliances will pass today's date.
Okay, but because of the DCG, there was a, for you to follow up, maybe give the sewer department a call and just have them come out and double check to be sure that the upgrades were good at the time, and we want to be sure that they are still in place.
Sure.
So that would be one of the requirements from the DCG for you to follow up on. And thank you, Mrs. Goodrich, for that. And that goes along with stormwater rule regulations and requirements. So it's all, you know, water along that road and drainage and what have you, so please contact the sewer department and follow up on that.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else? Being none, have you got anything else to add to this tonight?
No, thanks.
Okay. Have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I will entertain a motion. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void. And with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license with the following sentence added to the fourth bullet, the applicant shall follow up with the sewer department regarding floor drains and comply with any of their recommendations.
Second.
Requirements, I'm sorry, not recommendations, requirements.
The motion been made and seconded. Sharon, have you got that? Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next we have, Mr. John LaFleche, and this proposed solar project at Bay Path Regional Vocational High School.
Good evening and...
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting me up. It's good to see you all again. I think there may be some new faces on the board since the last time I've been here. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm John LaFleche, the superintendent at Bay Path. And in April, of course, the town manager reached out to me specifically about questions relative to some of the issues that came up because of the solar project that we continue to pursue. Although it's a project that has a lot of hurdles, we feel that it's something we wanted to pursue, we need to continue to pursue. Basically, and I think a question was asked during your meeting, one of your meetings in April, as you know, we just recently, I guess now it's a couple of years, completed a $73 million addition renovation project up at the school. And as I said in my letter, I appreciate the support that the board, as well as the townspeople, gave us when that project came before them. Some of you may have had the opportunity to come up to Bay Path since then. Mr. Bertheum has been on the committee, and I'm not sure if you've seen it, Lionel, since it's been redone, but it...
Not the inside, but the outside.
It looks like a whole new building, and it's working very well. But when we came to the board at that time, we were very clear and precise that one of our main goals was to do that project on time and on budget. And we're proud to say we did that. But as you know, having done many extremely difficult projects in the town of Auburn, there are times you have to make decisions as to how do you keep those projects on time and on budget. In our case, when we went into the project, we found out that the state will only reimburse, the MSBA will only reimburse the project for 8% of work outside of the building on grounds and sewers and so forth. And so when we saw that, we realized that we were not going to have money in that budget to fix the fields or get new fields, because that would have driven up the net cost to the project to the taxpayers. And in our view, would have violated what we had said to all of the 10 towns, that we were going to keep this project within a certain cost. When, in 2016, we had some of the coaches come to us concerned about some of the safety issues relative to the fields, the football field, some of the practice fields. So in 2016, we went out and we hired a consulting firm, Gale Associates. You may, from time to time, run across him in Auburn, or if not, he's done a lot of municipal work. And their study indicated there were seven rather emergency-type projects that needed to be done to improve the fields and make sure they were safe. And then long-term, we needed to look at additional fields or upgrading significantly the ones we had. We immediately took care of the seven problems that we had. The fields are fine, they're safe for all of our students and athletes. And then we started thinking longer term, how would we upgrade fields and/or get additional capacity? One of our school committee members suggested we take a look at solar, because in Charlton and many towns, solar has been very popular. We own 200 acres of land at the school, 100 acres on the site that we, that the building sits on, and 100 acres, give or take, across the street. So in looking at that, we spent about a year talking with solar companies as to the feasibility of a project. Would it make sense to look at that and put some resources, mainly time and effort, not money, into pursuing a project? And the answer came back yes, because of all of the solar credits and the size and where we were, it was feasible to consider a project. So in November of 2016, we went ahead and put together a fairly detailed RFP. The town of Southbridge had done a similar project not too long before that, so we met a couple of times with the town of Southbridge, and in fact, they were kind enough to give us a lot of their documents that we could then use. We put the project out for a request for proposal and actually received six proposals back. After looking at all those proposals, both from an economic point of view and from a design point of view, we had a committee of school committee members, and they selected a preferred project. And that project would have brought about 6.3 megawatts of generation and over a 20-year life, almost $6 million. That money would have been used to upgrade fields and possibly build a field across the street from the school. In the interim, a couple of things happened. Number one, a lawsuit that was settled in 1991 was discovered. Apparently, Bay Path back in 1991 wanted to lease some land to a cable company. At the time, I think they were building some towers, and it was going to service the town of Charlton. The town of Southbridge sued, and the case eventually was settled by a superior court judge who said that Bay Path could only lease property, lease its property, for those purposes found under chapter 71, which is the education law. So I think the town, the Board of Selectmen, saw that we had filed some special legislation. That special legislation is to specifically allow us to go ahead and do a lease of solar if and when that became feasible. That's the reason we had to file the legislation, because of that lawsuit back in 1991. Since all of that has transpired, the town of Charlton, about nine months ago, I think, put a solar moratorium so that they could consider and create a solar bylaw for the town. We met with that solar bylaw committee. They worked with us to help us understand what that was going to be like. They showed us the draft of the bylaw. And we had given the town of Charlton assurances that once the bylaw was passed, if we were going to do a solar project, we would comply wholeheartedly with every condition. And as you can imagine, some of the issues for the residents are the screening of the project, making sure that there's a decommissioning plan, all of these types of steps. They don't, they don't want a willy-nilly project that 20 years from now is going to create a problem for the town to deal with. And we agree with them on that. When it went to town meeting in May, the bylaw contemplated allowing 40 solar projects in the town, of which 21 are already built. On the floor at the town meeting, that was amended from 40 down to 30 projects. At the current time, there are nine projects at the planning board, which would, in essence, fill up the 30 slots. Bay Path is not one of those, because the need to get this special legislation meant we scrapped the first RFP. We felt we didn't have the legal authority to go ahead and do that. Now, several folks in the town have told us they're not sure that all nine would proceed, so there may be, in a future point, some capacity to seek a project. In addition to that, the bylaw exempts solar projects that are built over asphalt. So in other words, if you wanted to put canopies in a parking lot, which several entities in Worcester, I think Quinn Sigerman College is pursuing that, where they'll, they'll build solar canopies in their parking lot to generate electricity, those are exempt from that bylaw. That's all kind of moot at this point until the legislation that we filed, if and when that passes. We went to a, I testified in June at a Joint Committee on Education hearing about the bill, and on June 27th, it was reported out favorably to the Senate Rules Committee. And of course, the Senate Rules Committee, at some point, I assume, will have a hearing and decide whether they're going to put it out to the full floor for a vote. I have, I can't tell you what the timeframe on that would be. So that's where we stand. I would say, obviously, there have been a few more hurdles put in our place with all of the, the other issue to contemplate is the fact that National Grid, it appears they would have to do some significant upgrade to the grid in Charlton and in those areas to accept more solar. And I'm not a, I'm not an electrical engineer, so I don't understand, although I hear that it's not balanced and they can't take it into their system. And as Mrs. Jacobson and I discussed briefly, there'll be costs to that. Now, in the first RFP, all costs were going to be borne by the solar company. So if there was a $50,000 interconnection fee with Mass Electric, that would have been borne by them. There would be no costs whatsoever to the school. We would not purchase the power, because we already purchased 90% of our power through solar credits with the solar project at Treasure Valley. So in a nutshell, that's where we stand. I won't give you a handicap as to whether I, how likely it is that a project will go forward, but I know this, that without the legislation, we can't do it. And what we are continuing, always try to do, is mitigate the cost of services to the towns. So yes, Bay Path would get an annual lease payment, but that would all be used to offset costs from our budget to the towns. As you know, for many, many years, we were at minimum for the appropriation. For the last five or six, we've had to go above that, because we were below net school spending. But even that has been trending back down, and I don't expect, unless some kind of a catastrophe comes up, that we would expect to see that go up, above minimum, any higher than we are now. So certainly on that piece, I'm happy to take questions, and I know that because I haven't been here for a while, a couple of other updates while I'm here, and maybe we'll see each other more frequently, but I did want to talk about a few things that are going on at the school. And I noticed Chief Coleman is here this evening. We're very excited at Bay Path, because we'll be starting, under Chief Coleman's excellent leadership, a fire services club for the kids at school. And that's a District 7 collaboration, where all of the towns in District 7 are going to take responsibility for presenting programs to those students at Bay Path that would be interested in learning about fire services. And I'm sure you may have heard from the chief about the difficulty in attracting firefighters, both volunteers and even full-time firefighters, to the service. And we're hoping that there'll be a number of students that are interested, who may see that as a viable career opportunity down the road. Because as you know, that's one of our primary functions, is to get students ready for careers. So I can't tell you how impressed I am with the chief relative to all of the groundwork that he's done for that, and I really appreciate it, because I know a couple of times, we've had fire departments within our 10 towns present graduating students with their helmet, because they were going to go to work in the fire department. So we're hoping that that will increase the viability of the career for our students. In addition to that, we are at the very, we are at very preliminary stages of looking at the possibility of a veterinary program for the school. We did some initial work about a feasibility study to put a veterinary clinic on the grounds at Bay Path. The cost for that is prohibitive. However, the veterinary program that wanted to work with us is looking to purchase a piece of property in our district, hasn't been identified yet. It's a veterinary clinic that works with low-income people, as well as folks who can afford the services, but primarily 70% of their services are to folks who have limited means, and they discount the services. If that were to go through, we would have a classroom right at the veterinary program, and it's a, it's a very in-demand service. A lot of kids are looking for that. Some are going to agricultural schools, because they have the veterinary program. Again, just like the solar, it takes, it takes a while to develop these programs. In the fall, we'll have discussions with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and in no case would this be something that would be ready for implementation in less than two years. And that's, that's probably a little bit of an aggressive timeframe, but we have to start investigating it now. And thirdly, just as a note, Bay Path will be undergoing its 10-year NIESC accreditation this year. So in the spring, we'll have a team visiting, and all of our faculty and staff have been working diligently over the last 12 months, and they'll work up and through April to get ready for the visit, and we're hopeful that that will go well. But certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and again, I do thank you for inviting me here tonight.
Well, I think before we get started, I would like to commend you and your administration, the school itself, for all the improvements you've made, and for the leaps and bounds you've made to include all these additional programs with the chief, with the veterinary program. It's, yeah, they're all worthwhile projects, and I'm glad you're taking them on, and yeah, everything gets started slowly, but once it starts, then you can see the success rate, and, well, we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other comments? Questions? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question for you, going back to the solar project. If you have a favorable outcome with the legislature, would you consider going back to town meeting and looking for either an amended bylaw or something outside the bylaw if all 10 of the current solar farm slots were filled? I mean, it's certainly something to look at, because it's certainly not-for-profit. It saves the taxpayers money, so I would, and the reason I ask now is it could take time to get, to start the process of amending a bylaw and getting it through town meeting, so...
Yes, and we've had, I've had preliminary discussions. What we want to do is get the legislation passed, and then, there's been a change in the planning board, so I don't know that person as I did prior. We would sit down, meet with them, and gauge where are we relative to the current bylaw. I mean, in addition, you know, Bay Path, as a regional municipal entity, has certain abilities, but yes, we won't just say if nine are filled, we're done. The other issue is, which I haven't studied, but, and I have a prejudice against, and sometimes I have to caution myself not to rule something out, this other idea of a, of the canopies might be feasible in some area, but no, we won't. If we can get the legislation passed, then we're going to start the next steps in earnest.
Great. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Bertheum?
Quick question. So if, for some reason, legislation doesn't go through with the solar, what is Plan B and what is the fate of the sports fields at that point?
There isn't an identified Plan B at this point in terms of funding new fields. So what we would have to do, because quite frankly, you know, the cost of a brand-new field would be fairly significant. And personally, I'm only speaking for myself, I'm very mindful of the fact that every year, our 10-town taxpayers are paying to the towns to pay that debt. So I'm familiar, I'm very cognizant of that. But what we would do, Lionel, is we would have to get together and start looking at what kind of upgrades to the current fields would be needed at a lower cost. I don't have another funding source identified at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Caffordham?
So just a question. You outlined that you've gone through this process twice. And I've been on the board since 2014, and I have not had you come before the board to even apprise us of this legislation. I just happened to come across it in a newspaper article, and was concerned, especially when I asked the manager, and she didn't know about it. So I would just ask that as you continue to go forward, are you going to communicate with the other towns? As far as I know, you've only talked to Charlton. Have you spoken to anybody besides us in the interim?
First of all, of course, each of the towns has a couple of representatives to the school committee, so obviously, they all know about that. In the spring, we met with six towns who invited us in to talk about budget and so forth. In each of those six presentations, we mentioned the solar project. So I think if you talk, we're probably at eight towns that have had face-to-face discussions, and I can't tell you about the other two. So I mean, hopefully, from, and I think I've discussed this with the manager, we're open to coming, and generally speaking, our communications with the towns, especially Boards of Selectmen, because their so, their schedules are so jam-packed, usually come around budget time. And I think for some towns, our appropriations haven't increased much, and sometimes, you know, the spring is very busy for them, so we may not get an invite, and so we have to do a better job of formalizing an opportunity to talk. And I, as I said in my correspondence, I apologize for that lack of communication, and one of my goals over the coming years to improve that, either through a newsletter-type formal communication to managers and asking them to get it to the boards, or even now with the email, of course, but there will be more communication.
I appreciate that. Thank you for coming tonight, and everything you guys do.
You're welcome, and you'll be hearing from me.
Great. Is anybody, yes, Mr. Lulivity?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for coming in. I know I'm one of the people that hasn't actually met you, so welcome, and thanks for coming in.
Well, you're welcome, and it is your school, and I know Mrs. Jacobson takes advantage of some of the services we offer from time to time, and we're happy to do that, so... Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
All right. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, should I move? Or should we just take this one?
How long do you think this one will be?
This shouldn't take long.
I would just do it.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we have Communications, and we have none tonight. Another of the Board of Selectmen general items, we have Zoning Board of Appeals. The third candidate, Mr. Bailey, for the one associate member seat, will be here tonight, and he is. And we also have the Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman, Mr. Robert Tatro, in our attendance tonight, and we can get started here. So, Mr. Bailey, if you would care to come up and have a seat with us, that'd be great. Mr. Tatro, yes, please.
If you would like to see him. Very glad to see you.
Okay, we've already had two other candidates come in, and you are the third one, so welcome.
Thank you.
And maybe you can introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you.
My name is Jeff Bailey. I've lived in Auburn about 12 years now. I am a branch manager for Millbury Credit Union in the South Grafton Branch. I've been in banking for about 23 years. I've lived in Massachusetts my whole life. I'm not sure what else, what else would you like to know?
Well, I guess a couple of things, and I'll ask board members if they have any questions to get started. Caffordham?
So you have a banking background.
Correct.
What have you, what kind of banking? I see you've been assistant manager. Have you done loans? Are you involved in business? Are you involved in the chain?
I'm involved in just about everything. I started many, many years ago as an assistant manager and worked my way up to manager, not too long after that. I've been a manager about possibly 10, 11 years now. We handle, we try to do as much as we can in the community. We, I handle loans, business calls, working with small businesses to help them grow, and basically do whatever I can to assist members in their everyday financial situations.
What made you think to jump in here to the ZDA?
Well, I've been wanting to do more in the community, and just hadn't had the opportunity to move forward with it. And I worked with Karen, I worked with Karen Blaze, who was a prior person on the board. So she and I had been talking, and she mentioned that she had stepped down from the position, and we talked about it, and she said what a great opportunity it was. So I said, you know what, this sounds like a great opportunity to step forward and start doing more for my community.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? Well, Mr. Lulivity, go ahead.
I just have one question. On the... On the form that you filled out, you said that you would be willing to be considered for other boards and commissions. I was just wondering what other boards or commissions you had any interest in.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Oh, sorry. On the form that you filled out, you said that you'd be willing to be considered for any other boards and commissions. I was just wondering if there were any others that you had an eye on or were looking at.
The Conservation Commission interests me a lot also, to start.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there anything that got you interested in the Zoning Board of Appeals? Have you got any background or have watched any meetings and had a chance to talk to anybody that's other than Karen?
No, I just thought it would be one that sounded interesting to me. I did watch a few meetings on the website, and I think it's something that would interest me.
Okay, and you could be objective in your discussions and your decisions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. It does take some time, some energy.
Yes.
It's all the boards and commissions, the volunteers, and we appreciate everything that everybody has done for the town. And have you got the time, the ability to take that time to get involved in it and learn the Zoning Board of Appeals processes, the laws, the regulations, bylaws?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Thank you. Is anybody got anything else? Okay. Have you got anything else you'd like to add after the questions we've asked you?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm okay.
Okay. Well, we've had, like I said, we've had a chance to, I interviewed two others. We've interviewed tonight, so we had a chance to think about what we're going to go and which way we're going to go with this. But thank you so much for showing your interest and coming forward and applying for this. And if this doesn't work for you, then I would like to see you come back and, you know, under your Conservation Commission. But, you know, we've got three great candidates here for the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I would like to just have the members of the board have a chance to think about it, and we would like to take a vote probably at our next meeting in August.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you so much for coming in, and it's a pleasure to meet you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you for meeting me.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tatro, have you got anything you'd like to add to what we've had tonight?
Actually, you know, you answered or posed all the questions that I had already, so I got the answers I was looking for. I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and, you know, volunteer for the position. As the chair had mentioned, we have three outstanding candidates, one of them including yourself. I haven't made any decisions yet to give a recommendation. I thought it would be fair for me to just keep an open mind and make sure that the process was complete. I think I will probably send something via email in the next few days. I'm not really sure what their timeline is like, but I really do appreciate you coming in and volunteering for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Pleasure meeting you. Thank you very much.
Thank you both for coming in.
And leaving, I just want to say again, thank you so much. All of you really put a lot of effort into making sure the zoning board is sort of well-cared for, if you will. And I do want to see, you mentioned Ms. Blaze, and I just want to kind of publicly thank her for her time on the board. She did an outstanding job. You know, she was an alternate, but every time she was brought forth as a full-time member, she really paid attention, she was engaged in everything, she did a fantastic job, and I'm really kind of sorry to see her go. So, but thank you all very much, and I'm going to go next door to my other meeting now, so have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, enjoy the rest of your summer. Thanks for coming in. Next on our agenda, we have Sheldon's Holly Davidson, one-day outdoor entertainment licenses and one-day beer and wine licenses under revised dates. Have we got representatives from Holly Davidson here? Ms. Jacobson, have you got representatives from the town?
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to invite up the police chief and Ms. Coyle. Well, actually, I'm not sure how you want to handle this, Mr. Chairman. I was thinking it might be appropriate for the police chief and Ms. Coyle to give their reports to you. The board at the last meeting had asked that they attend the prior event at Sheldon's, and both of them did. So I think it might be appropriate, before you get to the new dates that they're asking, to just have the police chief and Ms. Coyle follow up with you on the information that the board was looking for. And then you'll have the full information that you need to make the decision to go forward on the agenda.
Great. Is that okay with the board? Okay. Would you have them come up?
Yeah, so do you want to, excuse me, would you mind sitting there for a moment, and then we'll let the town administration give a report, and then we can get to your item. I think that would probably be comfortable.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Chief. Welcome, Ms. Coyle.
Hi, good evening.
Through the chair, if I can just remind the board that at the last event, the police chief had offered to go down during that event and to watch what was going on and listen, most importantly. And Darlene Coyle, who's our Director of Development and Special Services, had worked with DEP and borrowed the DEP equipment to go and do some testing on establishing an ambient level and then decibel level. So that was done during this last event, and I think I'm going to turn it to them, to both of them, to report what they found from that.
Please.
I'm not sure what's going on over here, so. Hi, good evening. Thank you, Julie. So on June 29, Sheldon's had an event on that day, and Chiefs Lucas and myself were able to take about two and a half to three hours. We did some observations on that day for taking some sound levels, and DEP had graciously allowed us to borrow some of their equipment. The equipment that they allowed us to use takes noise decibels, and that equipment was used on the 29th to be able to take some decibel readings. We did approximately about six locations, and these locations were in the area of Prospect Hill, some of the areas that the town has received some complaints in the past, and some other areas in and around Hill Street, the intersection of Sunnyside and Prospect Streets, the end of the cul-de-sac at Sunnyside, and across the street from the Sheldon's, the Sheldon's lot. And at different periods, I think we were out there a little afternoon time, prior to the event starting, and we were able to take some decibel readings, both before and during the event. The event consisted of some music, some live music. There was a motorcycle ride, and we were fortunate to be able to get out there really before the motorcycles had come back to the, to the business. And what we found was that there were readings in the 40s and 50s. There was one isolated incident of a reading in the 70s, and that was when there was a state police helicopter that had done a flyby. So that was for a short period of time. But the events, the event took place over a period of time, and we were there from about 12:15 to about 3 o'clock. Does that sound all right? The function did have live music. These were samples of readings that were taken on that day, so by no means does this measure any other day. This was an afternoon event, and the weather was, it was a nice sunny Saturday. So there wasn't a lot, a strong wind that would have impacted the readings. So that was, that wasn't part of the, a concern for us.
Questions?
Through the, through the chair, if I may just add one thing. Darling, could you just explain that by DEP standards, what the decibel readings mean? So a 40 is the equivalent of what, and a, and it was less than 10 decibels over ambient, correct?
Sure, so. Excuse me, just one second. Miss, through the chair. Mr. Chairman, I don't want the air conditioner shut off, but I am having a hard time hearing, so if everybody could just leave their, keep their voices up, please. But please don't shut the air conditioner off.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll, I'll try to raise my voice here. So the, the decibel reading, so for example, the intersection of Sunnyside and Prospect Street, before the event occurred, a decibel reading was taken of 45 decibels. During the event, that same, that same area was 46. For the end of cul-de, the cul-de-sac at the end of Sunnyside, where we have repeated complaints for noise, that was 44 prior to the music starting, and that one went up to 49 decibels. I think the chief and I will both agree that you could hear music clearly at the end of Sunnyside, but it was, again, a Saturday afternoon, similar to if somebody was having an event, party, or a graduation, something similar to this time of year. The next location was at Hill Street, at the bottom of Hill Street, more towards Route 20. And that decibel reading was expected to be louder, just because of the traffic there. That decibel reading was 56, and that was also the area, when we took the reading during the event, that's when the flyover happened of the helicopter, that actually went up to 76. So there was a 20-point decibel change, but again, it was for, for a brief period. Hill Street, in, in the area of 60, in that range, there are residential houses that are elevated from Route 20. That area, prior to the event, was 46, and the decibel reading went up to 49. The intersection of Hill and Prospect Street, this actually is a case where the decibel reading was 56, and during the event, when the music was playing, it went down to 52. Again, there was a, somebody who was mowing their lawn on a riding lawnmower. So in that case, the decibel reading prior to the event was actually louder than what the ambient temp was, the ambient level was. And then the area across the street from Sheldon's, where the event was playing, in that decibel reading was 56, and during the event, we had several decibel readings that ranged from 56 to 62 during the event, when the music was playing. So we took that several times at varying distances away from the lot while the event was going on with music playing. DEP does have a noise regulation, and they also have a policy on the regulation, and the, the change in decibel reading that they measure if there is a, something that is a violation, is the, is anything that exceeds 10 decibels. In the, the day that we were out there on the 29th, and again, we only took these readings on one day, but that indicated on that day that there wasn't any decibel reading that was greater than 10.
Chief, have you got anything to add to that? Please.
I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a point of historical perspective, for those of you that may not be familiar with the issue that took place, now probably going back about 20 some-odd years, when we had problems with periwinkles, with their live outdoor entertainment disturbing the neighbors. I have somewhat of a basis of knowledge with respect to noise issues in the area. It just so happened that I happened to be the one at the time that took periwinkles to court and was fortunately successful to get them to be shut down because the noise was, it was, it was over the top. The noise that Darlene and I experienced from the music that was being played there in no way, shape, or form compared to what we dealt with years ago from periwinkles. As a matter of fact, there were times when, as she said, you know, you could hear music being played, but there were actually times when the truck traffic and motorcycles driving by actually drowned it out, the music from the band playing. If, if it were me that lived there, I would, and I suppose I probably wouldn't live there because of the, the traffic noise, I would be, I guess if you were a prospective homeowner, I would be more concerned with the, the traffic going by than anything that comes from their dealership. I think quite honestly, you know, they've gone from, you know, Friday night to more of a Friday afternoon event, now to a Saturday afternoon event. I think, you know, they've tried to work with us, and based upon the amount of noise that is actually generated from the event, I think the Saturday venue that currently exists is probably a happy medium for everyone. Darlene and I did speak to some of the neighbors that were there, and there were actually some of the neighbors that have been before you before regarding this issue, not all of them, but some of them. And they seem to think that Saturday was kind of the happy medium too for, for everyone involved. You know, if the music that we heard was being played at, you know, 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, then, you know, that would probably be a different story. But, you know, I think you have to take the time and the circumstances into account when making a decision whether or not you're going to allow entertainment like this to, to occur. And I think the word would probably be fair is to doing this on a Saturday. I think that's fair for the residents, I think it's fair for the business, and I would recommend to you as a board that you would adopt their application requests for Saturdays in the, in the afternoon, at whatever time you deem to be appropriate. If you have any questions, Darlene and I, we'd be happy to take them before you vote on a decision in respect to their permit.
Is there anything? Mrs. Goodrich?
Just one question, because I'm thinking back of the complaints that we've had. Did you do anything behind, on any of the roads behind there? Behind Sheldon's, the, what are those?
Tinker Hill.
Albert Tinker Hill.
No, we did not do any noise readings there, because it was my understanding that there have never been complaints that have been generated from that area.
So I, I mean, I know that we did have one who came in person, so to the chief, you're not aware of any that have come in from that area?
No, I'm not.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is anybody got anything else? Mr. Caffendall?
Just a question, because I see DCG has a recommendation that if it's over 10, how is that going to be measured? You borrowed equipment, you made yourself available on a Saturday, how is that going to be handled going forward?
I guess I would say that taking, this was a sampling, if you will, to take a sampling of noise during an actual event that they had. I think that there wasn't anything here that came close to over the 10. So I think that reasonably, the board can consider events if, if there's the need that complaints are still developing from events that they're having here. Perhaps the board can consider conditions when they approve the permit. I think that in order to find a happy medium, such as the chief said, I think that, you know, we're trying to balance out what, what we can, what's going to be comfortable for the residents and their enjoyable, enjoying their property, and then also what's fair for the business to be able to operate and have these sort of events that is helping them stay in business. While we can respond to complaints, typically, I mean, we're not typically here on a Saturday. I'm not, I'm willing to come in if need be, but again, we don't have this equipment. This equipment is borrowed. It's very expensive equipment that has to be calibrated on a yearly basis and so forth. So it's expensive equipment that I don't think the town needs to purchase, but, you know, I think going forward, you know, the board can decide whether or not they want to support having these events and trying to find a fair playing ground. they want to support having these events and trying to find a fair playing ground. But if, I guess to answer your question, Mr. Carpenter, if need be, we can certainly borrow the equipment again, if we need to, to take measurements.
And through the chair, if I can also add to that, to first of all, thank the chief and Darlene for doing what they did on Saturday afternoon, spending so much time getting, learning to, how to use the equipment, getting trained by DEP on that use of equipment. I do think, from what I understand of decibels and what causes them to go up and how they rise, I don't see if a decibel readings are between 2 and 4 decibels over ambient. On a day that a band was playing, it would be very difficult for it to exceed 10 under any circumstances, because every decibel is magnified incredibly to get to that next level. So it's my understanding that it would take a long time for it to get over a 10.
And I guess that's fine, except for when I get the call, and who do I call? I guess that's my point, because I've been dealing with this for two years. So to me, if we're going to put in a standard of 10 decibels at any given time, whatever that may be, and I'm happy to be fair to the business community, I think I have been fair, more than fair. But if we're going to put a requirement in, then, and I call you on the phone and say, I think they're breaking it, and we don't have the equipment, but we've got a standard in here, you can see where my concern is, that we have a standard that DCG is recommending, that we don't have the ability to measure on our own, and we may not have the personnel available to do that. So that's my level of discomfort with the recommendation, I guess.
And through the chair, if I may too, I think in that case, I would agree with Darlene and the chief. I wouldn't recommend that a decibel level be put on it. I think the tests have proven that the music is not rising to the level that exceeds the DEP threshold for what they call noise pollution. It's not hitting that 10. So by not putting it on, we're not required to monitor. We don't have the equipment. It doesn't seem to make sense to me to purchase the equipment or to put the personnel into it when it's been proven for the one day that we were asked to go out, that they were not at that level. I think, you know, if a neighbor were to call, a resident were to call us, I think, as we've said before, have them contact the police department. But I think the police department is very, more than capable of going out when a call comes in and making a determination as to whether it's excessively loud compared to what it was on the Saturday that they did the testing. I think that's one of the reasons the chief wanted to go, he wanted to hear it himself.
If I may, through the chair, to maybe address Mr. Carpenter's issue. You know, this isn't anything new. This is something we do, especially once the warm weather hits. People call all the time complaining about loud noise, loud parties, loud music. And when the officers respond to the calls, they have to make a common sense determination as to whether or not it's reasonable or unreasonable. I think that they certainly possess the ability to make a determination as to whether or not the music is excessive and needs to either be A, turned down, or B, shut off, depending on the time. Once again, going back to the Saturday afternoon, I think that is going to eliminate a lot of the problems and a lot of the calls that probably would have come in. But that's a determination we can make. Anyone is free to call the police department, we'll always respond and go down. I have notified my supervisors that if they receive any calls about loud music, even if it's on the weekends, that I want to be notified. And if I am here in town, I will go down there myself and listen to the music.
Okay. I'm just concerned, because we have something in the DCG saying 10 decibels.
And if I can speak to that, it's in there, because at the prior board meeting, the board voted to have the band, to have the music stay at a certain decibel level. And then the board also voted to have Mrs. Goodrich be a liaison to the DCG, expressing the board's concern. So Mrs. Goodrich did a good job. She outlined five points that the board had. DCG took those into consideration, so that's why it was there, recognizing that this is done prior to any kind of testing being done, where it became pretty clear that they're not even going to come close to exceeding 10. So I think, to speak for DCG, the chief is on DCG, and Darlene has employees that are on DCG, I think that was there because they were following the board's original decision a couple of weeks ago, not to exceed a certain level of 50. And that's when they had that discussion at DCG, how do you even determine if it's 50 or 60, because we haven't determined ambient. So once ambient's determined at different points, I think it becomes a moot point to have to have that in there. So I would say that it's fine not to have that. It was there for a specific reason, that reason's now behind us, and we've done the due diligence. So I would say it's fine to not call that.
I would agree.
Okay, I would agree with that. I would greatly accept the report that you have given us. I think it's more than fair, I think it's reasonable, and I think, I understand the concerns of Mr. Carpenter. However, fairness and common sense step in also. And I think that we've gone through this process enough where all parties involved understand exactly what we're looking for and how things are going to work. So I would take your recommendation, and the DCG, yeah, the 10 decibels, as far as I know, I don't know what 10 decibels are as compared to snowmen on July 4th. So it's just one of those things that I just think it's fair and common sense that we just work with it, and just, like I say, all parties involved do understand it, and we'll go from there. And Mrs. Goodrich, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for your reports and for the work that you did on this. Just going back to the concern about complaints, chief, and I know you follow this closely, there was an issue with the reporting of the complaints and the origin of the complaints. If I could just ask that, that if you do get any calls, that they go to the location of the complaint, not directly to Sheldon's? Because at least a resident will be reassured that the police officer has heard the level that they're hearing at their home, as opposed to making a determination.
I would wholeheartedly agree. Going to Sheldon's doesn't do anybody any good. They need to go to the address where the complaint is originating from, absolutely.
The reason I ask that is, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that when previous calls were made, they were going directly to Sheldon's. So before even going to Sheldon's, I think just a courtesy to the complaint would have an officer arrive at that location and at least hear the noise level at that time.
I agree, yes.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
All right, is there anything else? Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you very, very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I'd like to have Sheldon's come back and visit with us.
So we can take those after.
Yeah, the public safety. So we've heard the report. It sounds like you've met your match, and things are going along well out there. So that's a great report, and we really appreciate what you've done. What are your plans for, from this point on? What else have you got coming forward for activities?
I believe the events we're speaking about today, or the event that we're speaking about today is that Saturday Bike Day, the next one we have coming up, which would be...
This Saturday, the 20th, and then September. Those three.
So I was unclear on that. Are we speaking about just this Saturday? Are we trying to do all the events in one?
Through the chair, if I may, in your packet, you'll see that there were three events that are listed that are remaining. The June 19th had already happened, but this was an item that was carried forward, which is why you're seeing it. So July 20th, August 17th, and September 21st.
Perfect.
Which I understand was tentative at the time that you had applied, but you'd still like to get that date secured.
God willing, the weather's still nice, or still right.
It's going to be, it's going to be nice.
So one in August, one in July, one in August, and one in September.
Okay. Mr. Berthium.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license. And that is for the events of 7:20, 8:17, and 9:21. Those are Saturday afternoons from, I believe it's 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock, is that correct? That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second? One second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just add something. Because I know I received an email at one point, the licenses have been given from 1 to 4, and then, I'm sorry, it was 2 to 5.
I can hear you.
Oh, sorry. I had received an email, and I believe Mrs. Goodrich had also, that a license had been, the last license was 2 to 5 p.m. But the band does start setting up and sometimes having to do tests. So there could be music that you hear a half hour before that starts, because they're getting ready and they've got to test their speakers. So my recommendation would be, even though their band is 1 to 4, that I would recommend at least a half hour on either end for setup and takedown, because there is still noise, and that may prevent the residents from being concerned that the band is actually not playing within the appropriate time. It does take time to set these things up, and they do have to do testing, and that's not what they're paying for. They're paying for the actual music, which then runs three hours. So my recommendation would be to do a four-hour window, you know, so maybe do a 12:30 to a 4:30 to cover that setup/takedown.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're under discussion purposes, and I was actually going to ask Mr. Berthium if he would be willing to amend his motion to include, and I did discuss this with the manager, because we certainly don't, we've come so far, we don't want to have a resident complain that they're, you know, and I did, I got the email, I forwarded it, you know, why are they playing music already? They have a license from 1 to whatever. So, I mean, residents are going to be watching this, making sure they're to the minute, because they're frustrated with this. So I would ask Mr. Berthium to amend his motion to include 12:30 to 4:30. And also, because I feel that we've addressed this, I think, you know, we have the chief on board here, who understands the residents' concerns, and we do not have the equipment to measure the decibels. That I would, my second request of Mr. Berthium to amend his motion would be to remove the bullet that says the noise level shall not exceed 10 decibels above the to-be-determined ambient noise level. And that's all I have.
I would agree to that. Do you have that, Chairman?
Okay. And so the motion been made, amended, and Mr. Little Liberty, you seconded it, is that agreeable with you?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May the weather be on your side?
Entertainment and the license.
That was the entertainment and the license?
Yes, that was for the entertainment license. Now we'll have it for the beer and wine, for the one day, for those three days. Is there any comment, question? As before, then you will have all the TIP certified people, you will have the areas designated for, type of a thing, and we'll be monitored by your employees.
Yep, yes, sir.
If there be nothing else, we'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license for the dates of July, yep, July 20th, August 17th, and September 21st. Yeah, I got those right. Provided that all applicable requirements from the DCG and recommendations be placed on the license, and failure to comply with those recommendations and requirements result in nullification of the license. And also to, I guess we don't need to bother with the amended DCG report, so we'll just leave it at that.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Mrs. Goodrich, you seconded. Okay, Mr. Goodrich.
I'm just curious as to the hours. I know generally the beer and wine license is outside of the entertainment license. What are your hours for these events?
Technically, I'm open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I would imagine we're not serving alcohol before 11:00 a.m., so it would probably be 11 to 5, I would expect. I know last time when we did the beer and wine license, it encompassed the entire day, the hours of operation.
So we've just...
Mr. Carpenter.
No, I don't have anything. I'd ask that you amend the motion to be at 11 to 5. That seems that we're nonplussed at the moment.
Sure, we haven't done in the past. I guess our last, we didn't set a time limit, but that should encompass everything, so I'll amend the motion.
Okay. Mr. Berthium.
I don't feel, I again, don't know why we're, we give everyone else a one-day beer and wine license, why are we making it different here? I think the original motion is sufficient. It's not, you know, I feel like we're treating one person one way and another person another way. One-day beer and wine license, period, end of sentence. I would ask that the original motion carry forward.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, when we have issued one-day beer and wine licenses in the past, we have limited them to the hours of the event, be it an Auburn Youth and Family Services road race. It's been the hours that they have requested to be down at the field. If we've done a one-day beer and wine license for Chuck's Outdoors for an event they had, it was from the beginning of the event till the end of the event. These are bike events, not hours of operation. So I would prefer to see it within these bike events, which, you know, certainly seems reasonable, 11 to 5.
Mr. Berthium.
In that case, if the event is 9 to 5, then if we want to put the hours of the event, then we should put the hours of the event. I don't think if somebody wants to have a beer at 10:30, and it's the hours of the event, then so be it. That's my feeling, is that I don't want to start going hour, hour, hour. If we want to do it for the entire event, then we'll do the entire event. Otherwise, I don't, I don't think it's up to me to decide who's going to crack a beer at what time.
Thank you, sir.
So the motion.
Before we do that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the only reason I ask is because Mrs. Goodrich seemed to have a problem, and nobody, the applicant didn't give us a time, Mr. Berthium. So if they want to tell us 9 to 5, and you're okay with that, that's okay. But some of us aren't necessarily okay with it, and that's our right too. So there's, you know, we have followed past practice, and perhaps we've fallen off, I don't know, I don't believe we have. But the applicant usually provides it. So if the applicant wanted to provide 9 to 5, then the applicant should tell us 9 to 5. It isn't up to the board to get out our crystal ball and decide. But if, in the absence of that, I will happily provide 11 to 5 is what I will support. I don't think people should be drinking at 10:00 in the morning. Maybe I'm too puritanical, but that's my feeling.
Mr. Berthium.
Again, I want it to be something uniform. So if the, we've been told that the event is 9 to 5, we've been told, you know, that our past has been that it's for the length of the event, so I, we should handle this one the way we've handled it in the past. If it's a one-day beer and wine license, and we in the past have kind of set a precedent of that it's the duration of the event, then let's just do the duration of the event. If it's 9 to 5, then let's do 9 to 5. Again, you know, I completely respect, you know, what your feelings are on, and you can respect my feelings on it, and I'm just saying, I'm giving you my opinion. That's all I'm doing.
Thank you, Mr. Berthium. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, and it's not that, I'm not disagreeing with the hours, I just want to know what the hours of operation are going to be. Well, you know, there's nothing on here that says when their, when their event hours are. We have an application in front of us that says days and hours of operation, 10 to 7. So it doesn't even say 9 o'clock. It says 10 right on our application. So that's why I'm asking for the hours to be listed. I mean, 10 to 7 is what's listed on the application, not 9 a.m., 10. So I think we need to be more consistent with our application, and we need to be more consistent with our guidelines here.
Yes, I turn to you now, we've had a conversation over here, so...
Okay, so I'm going to answer the hours of operation. So we've sat here on multiple occasions, and every time it's behooved you, it's, you've brought up my Facebook page and my webpage. Now we don't have my Facebook page and my webpage hours available at this point. We're open from 10 to 7, Monday through Friday. We're open from 9 to 5 on Saturday, and we're open from 10 a.m. to 3 a.m., or 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. on Sunday. So if I could get hours of operation for the liquor license, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Sharon, can we have the motion, please? I understand the basics of it, but if the, well, just give us the...
Basically, the motion was to approve the one-day...
Yes, would you, yeah, thank you.
Approve the one-day beer and wine license for 7:20, August 17th, 9:21, provided that the applicable requirements of the state and town and the department's boards or commissions have been fulfilled. Subject to our conditions, failure to comply shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license. Mrs. Goodrich then asks that amendment be made to include the hours.
Okay. Who made the original motion?
Mr. LaLiberty.
Okay, Mr. LaLiberty. We'll send it over to you and you care to, and the, excuse me, the motion for the times for the beer and wine.
I believe I did say that I would amend it to the set times recommended, which was 11 to 5:00. So I'll amend it to 11 to 5:00.
For the chair, if I may just add something in that we just were talking about earlier is whatever the board votes on, just to make sure that the ABCC isn't establishing hours. I know there are certain Sunday hours. This is not a Sunday, so it's not applicable. But if, I think the, if you're going to give it for the day and the hours of the operation, I think maybe to make it conditional upon in accordance with ABCC regulations. Because if the ABCC comes in and says you actually can't serve before 10:00, then it, then they can't...
Do we know what that regulation is?
I would have to look that up. Yeah. I know on Sundays, it is, there are limits. I believe there likely are.
No, it's Sunday.
Is it 10:00?
Okay.
We're not addressing a Sunday license.
So if the board is, I'm not sure where the motion is right now, but if the board is back from 9:00 to 5:00, I don't know that they can serve at 9:00. So I would think you might want to do it from the time that the ABCC allows the event to commence up until whatever time, as Mrs. Goodrich is saying, just trying to find out what time the event is going to and when you plan on stopping.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I just feel the need to say something right now because the manager just took another swipe at me. I've sat here week after week. I've made motions to try to accommodate you. I've just made a motion to increase the hours and you continue to just swipe at me and I find it disrespectful and I don't appreciate it.
Mr. Berthium.
I would, I would like to ask Mr. LaLiberty to amend the motion to be the hours of operation providing that it's within the ABC limits. And that way there, we can set that as a standard and we can use that going forward for not only Sheldon's Holly Davidson, but for any other organization that comes and asks us for a one-day beer and wine license.
I am not familiar with the, I am not familiar with the ABC.
That's what I say, as long as it's...
If we are going to, we're going to put this license forward tonight, we should have some timing on it. If it's, ABC says 10:00 o'clock, that's great, but we don't know that. So the hours of operation are 9:00 to 5:00 and, yeah, Mr. Berthium.
Just per discussion to the chair. So basically what I'm doing and what I'm asking for is similar to what we say, like complying to the DCG and the limits that have been placed upon it. This is that we're asking for a one-day beer and wine license for the hours of operation and within the ABC limits within that. So I think it's a, it's a pretty clear way of doing it. If the ABC says, you know, 10:00 and by us doing it that way, if the ABC this week changes it to 10:30, we're covered with that. And that's why I kind of proposed it that way, so that whatever the ABC is, that takes precedence over our ability to say it's the hours of operation. So I just feel like if we put hours of operation and then within the limits of the ABC, we've covered ourselves so that they don't start serving prior to the limit of the ABC. But we're also not putting anything on them other than the hours of the operation of the, or the hours of the event. That's, that's my point. And to me, I feel that that can be a good standard that we can set upon anybody that comes in front of this board.
Again, it's, we're not familiar with it, so it would be something we would have to look up and go from there. So I don't know if...
We don't have to look it up. It's their limit.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, yes, I understand what you're saying now. Okay. Yes, Mr. LaLiberty.
So does the ABC, I mean, I know none of us are really familiar with it. I thought that we were only talking about Sunday limits.
Through the chair, the ABCC, first of all, doesn't have any authority over one-day liquor licenses. That is, you are the authority for one-day liquor licenses. But if there are hours of operation that are statewide, regardless of whether it's a one-day or a full-fledged license, then that would be something that you'd, any facility holding, any facility, whether it was an alcohol facility or not, would have to abide by that. So I think what Mr. Berthium is saying is if you make the motion to approve the license in accordance with the requirements under the ABCC, just like you do in accordance with the recommendations of DCG, then that would trump it. But the ABCC does not oversee the one-day licenses. You are the only licensing authority. Your one-day license approval does not need another approval from the state.
I understand.
Okay. Yes, Chief Slukas.
Mr. Chairman, I was just informed the time is 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., so you can set whatever parameters you feel are appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, one final thing, and I'm, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to wait and see what the final motion ends up being. But I'll just point out in our memorandum that, from the DCG, that it's Sheldon's Holly Davidson, one-day beer and wine and outdoor entertainment licenses. They do not designate the hours with the exception of one to four and they're addressing both licenses in the same memo. So I think giving them an extension of the one to four is being generous.
Okay. So the motion right now is for hours of operation, correct?
I think the motion right now is from 11:00 to 5:00.
Yes.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to the hours of operation within ABC limits. I think this is something that, Mr. Berthium's right, we do need to think about being more consistent going forward. I have no preference. I don't know who's really going to be buying alcohol before their event, but I have no personal problem with it, so I'll amend that.
You're amending that to your 9:00 to 5:00?
Right.
To, excuse me, sir. Through the chair, we're amending it to hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
Right, which would be 9:00.
Which has just been determined for them, that particular Saturday is 9:00 to 5:00.
Okay. Is that your amendment now?
Yes.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation, yeah, which, yeah, to my understanding, 9:00 to 5:00.
And who was the second?
I'm...
Who made the original motion?
I made the original motion.
Doreen originally had a seconded the original motion.
All right. Doreen, are you...
No, someone else can second it.
I'll second it.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded for hours of operation. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to be clear on what we have for hours of operation.
9:00 to 5:00.
9:00 to 5:00, because the application does say 10:00 to 7:00. I just want to be sure that we're clear on that.
Okay. So there's any further discussion on this? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
So it's three to two. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck with your events.
Thank you.
All right. Now, which, let's see, which ones they are.
It is this one. So, B, under town manager, BAC.
Okay, so it would be this one here.
Yeah. Sorry, let me get it here.
Sorry.
It is...
6B and 6C.
6B and 6C.
Okay. I would like to move up a couple of items. Items 6B and 6C.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we have the housing director who should be next.
I beg pardon?
We have the housing director who should be next.
Through the chair, I had only recommended it because the fire chief was here with the communications director and I thought he indicated that he had something to him.
Okay, so he has prior commitments, so we'd like to move those 6B and 6C up. Is there a motion?
I would suggest that with the clarification that we got from the manager, Mrs. Brennan's item should be a two-second item, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't favor moving it up, with no disrespect to those waiting, but Mrs. Brennan has also been waiting. And I think her item is going to be very quick.
Okay. Yeah, let's see. All right. So item 5C, this is vote on the acceptance of Housing and Urban Development, the 2019 Capital Fund Program Formula Grant. And, Mr. Brennan, would you care to come up and sit with us? Now, we've had some questions over the course of the past. We, our last meeting, we had questions on what the point was of us signing and authorizing the grant money for you. Can you tell us a little bit about what your plans are and what you're going to be doing with that, just to give us information? It's just...
Well, it looks like they've done this for transparency. It's been going on for a number of years, the whole time I've been at the housing authority. This is what we do every year. In order for us to accept grant money, it first goes to Department of Housing and Community Development. They have to approve, the state actually has to approve the housing authorities getting federal funds. So they send us a sheet, they do them all at once, so we know exactly who's getting what for funding, for all the federal housing programs throughout the state. And then they sign off on it. Instead of doing it individually, they do it all at once. So we know which federal housing programs are getting what for money. And then in turn, they want us to contact the town through this mass general law, which I read it and really, I don't really even understand it. But in an interest of transparency, they want us to not only have approval from the state, but we also let the town know that in fact, we've been offered this grant and in order to accept it, we need to go before the board and just present it. So they want to give us $184,000 for 2019. That's our grant award for that year. So in our five-year plan, we have flooring, cameras. We are already in the process of doing windows and roofing with the 17 and 18 grant money. So those projects are going to start this summer. We've already gone out to bid. So then we move on. As we go along, we're going to start working on the parking lots. So as the work items get completed, we just keep moving the items forward. So the roofs at Stoneville will be completed this summer. The windows at Pineburg Court will be replaced this summer. So as these things get completed, then we just keep moving the work items forward out of our five-year plan. They gave us considerably more money, which I was, I was surprised. We did get a bigger grant award than we normally get. So that will enable us to do even more work items than I had originally planned. But I'm just going to stick with the plan and try to plug in like water heaters or whatever we can get under that specific amount of funds. But the reason they, they want us to come to you is just to let the town know that, oh, by the way, the federal government has given $184,000 to us for 2019 capital fund.
Okay. Thank you. And it's, again, it's something the town has no control over because housing has nothing to do with the town of Auburn. It is town of Auburn housing, but is not. And I understand that perfectly. But we did have, raised some questions here as to why we were signing it. And who actually audits your grant to be spent, the proper way? The state does?
State and federal.
Okay.
We get audited by both. We have to hire an independent auditor and we have one coming in on August 7th to do our entire program. And then the state has actually been out already to do the state program. We get audited every year.
Okay. Thank you. So this vote of acceptance of the Housing and Urban Development Capital Fund, it's in front of us now. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we accept it and authorize the chair to sign it.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And thank you for coming in.
I need to have this signed.
Okay.
She doesn't have to notarize. Oh, it's not. So this 3:00, you would give it...
Yeah. These are extras.
Those are extras. So, right there.
See, this is how Doreen did it last. You would sign right there.
Yeah.
And we can fill in the other things. Just sign.
Did you understand the law? Like, did you read it and understand it?
The manager gave us a full brief. Nobody ever understands the full law. It's not written in English. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So as they give us more money, I'll be back.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much and thanks for coming in. Now...
Thank you.
Thank you. Now what I'd like to do is move up items 6B and 6C.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Let me just go back.
Mr. Jackson for item 6B and 6C. Have you got representatives here?
We do, thank you. I'd like to invite the fire chief and Chief Coleman and Penny Ryan, our communications director, to come up. And I have to apologize, the chief was waving at me with his phone earlier and I thought he was trying to tell me he had to run, which is why I asked you to take it out of order. And I just went to see if everything was okay and he was not waving his phone at me.
Oh, okay.
It was him. So I apologize. I thought he had an emergency and had to get out of here, which is why I suggested we move the item. Thank you.
Well, good evening, both.
Good evening. So we have two grants here. So the first one, I'm going to turn to Penny and the chief to explain. It's an exciting opportunity for the town and for Penny. And I do have to say that, and the chief can better explain it, there is another certification here that this grant allows someone to apply for. And we're very proud that Penny already has that certification. I think she's one of 15 in the state.
Probably up to 25 now.
25 that have it. So she's proven that she does a great job when she goes to these courses, gets the certification, and it's a huge benefit to us. But this is a grant opportunity to potentially cover that. So I'll turn it to Penny.
Have to put my old lady glasses on. Good evening. So I'm Penny Ryan, the communications director that you hired almost a year ago. And it's been a very exciting year and I'm very, very happy to be working in Auburn. Everyone's been wonderful. The support here is unbelievable and I'm very, very happy. So one of the grants, the state 901, through and within code with the Massachusetts Communications Supervisors Association, which I'm a member of, every year does a grant for $50,000. The reason I'm here today is it's kind of time-sensitive. They sent out the applications June 18th and we had to have everything back by last Monday, July 8th. It happens kind of quickly. So I spoke with the chief and Julie. I asked if I could try for this grant. Generally, it's five people that they choose. One of the programs that I'd like to attend is the Certified Public Executive Program. It's 12 weeks online and then it's nine days in, nine days onsite at the APCO conference in, sorry, Florida. So through the grant, everything is covered. The cost, the cost of the class is $3,500. So through the grant, everything is covered, the cost of the class is $3,500, and then that's covered, and then all your expenses down there are covered. I was very fortunate in 2014 to be the recipient of the CCM, which I attended, and they covered everything, we went out to Kansas City for 14 days, and that was nine weeks online, so. So basically what this is, is I applied for it, we should know in the next week or two, probably going to be five people selected, I don't know if I have a chance in heck, but I was glad that they supported me, they had to write a letter of recommendation, so I sent it in, if it does happen, it'll be fairly quickly, and it'll be just like all the other State 911 grants that we deal with, that the town goes through, everything gets submitted and paid for through the grant.
And the grant is $10,000?
It's usually about $10,000, yeah. It was, I mean, the last time, it's a blanket amount to cover everything.
Okay. Is there any questions?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the filing, or whatever our usual words are, acceptance, we authorize the filing or the acceptance, and the expense, the expending of the funds for the Massachusetts Communications Supervisors Association, for the Town Communications Director to attend the Certified Public Safety Executive Course in and about January 2020.
Second.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The second one, I'm going to turn to Chief Coleman, this is another grant that we will be applying for, the amount isn't quite as much, it's a $1,000 grant, but I'm going to turn to the Chief.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I'm seeking permission to apply for a grant from the Council on Cardiopulmonary Critical Care and Resuscitation, they're sponsoring a travel grant in the amount of $1,000 that would allow firefighter paramedic Ovi Tiklia, who heads up our community CPR division, to be able to travel to the 2019 Resuscitation Science Symposium in Philadelphia. They're doing a lot of exciting work and changes right now, not only the American Heart, but other organizations with CPR. Locally, maybe you have seen some of it, either online or maybe in person, we've been doing a lot of public push on CPR, hands-only CPR. Two weeks ago, we did a very successful campaign between the public library, parking shop, and Shaw's supermarket, we spent some time doing a program that we call Sidewalk CPR, where in under five minutes, we can train someone to do hands-only CPR, and in the three days we did the event, we trained a little over 250 participants in CPR. So it's something that the department, we've been working and training in CPR for many, many years, but this would give firefighter Tiklia an opportunity to go out and sort of see some of the cutting-edge data and procedures that are going on with CPR. The grant does say that it is to defray the costs, the conference registration, if we get the grant, the conference registration is covered, and then the $1,000 is for additional travel, so if there are expenses over the $1,000, I do have that within the operating budget to cover.
Yes, Mr. Bertheu.
Make a motion to apply, accept, and expand the grant funds from the Council on Cardiopulmonary Critical Care and Resuscitation's Emergency Medical Services Travel Grant in the amount of $1,000 to cover registration and other travel expenses for a member of the Auburn Fire Rescue Department to attend the 2019 Resuscitation Science Symposium in Philadelphia.
Second.
Okay, is there any further question or comments?
I have one.
If, when do you have to have this grant in?
I believe it is due next week.
Okay, and if you don't receive the funds, what is the total expense, do you know what the total expense would be of sending Ovi to this?
I do not, what I can tell you is that if we don't get the grant, most likely we won't be able to attend the conference, because with other conference commitments with other members, the money, the money isn't going to be there. There would be enough, I think, for some overflow from the grant, but there wouldn't be enough, I think, to just send the member flat.
I would like to say, I'm going to support this grant anyway, but I would like to say that if you're not able to receive this grant, I think that it'd be worth our while to send Ovi, if we can find the funds in the town, to send him for this cutting-edge technology. I mean, we're moving forward, the future is upon us, and we've got to stay up with it, and I think that if we don't get the grant, I'd like to find some way that we can get Ovi to go to understand this and get that a little bit more.
Yeah, and I can certainly take a look at the budget, one of the good things, and I've been here before, and I know the manager has mentioned it in the past, that when I go to a conference, if I speak at a conference, the good thing is, we actually save quite a bit of money on most of the conferences that I attend, because I also speak at those conferences, and my registration and all of those other fees are free when I speak at those conferences, so that usually leaves us a little bit of surplus in that professional development line, so I will take a look at that, and, but I don't have a total cost of if we don't get the grant, what it would be, but I can certainly talk to Ovi about that, and we can look at the budget, and we can certainly see if we can swing it minus the grant.
Thank you. Is there anything further? The motion been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sign boards.
I'm sorry, through the chair, if you could kindly take Item E, that is also a Fire Chief item.
Okay, all right, Item 6E, can we move up Item 6E, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right.
Through the chair.
Please.
I'll lean into this, I apologize, it's hard, it is hard to hear with the air conditioning, but we like it, we don't need it turned off. The next item is a unique and new partnership with the business community to provide another mechanism for us for emergency messaging that the Chief came up with and implemented, so I want to turn to him.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. So I just wanted to just advise the board about a new program, new public-private partnership that we vented into with the business community, and it's the business community that specifically has electronic sign boards. One of the things that I think we struggle with in some respects, when we have an emergency in the town, whether we have to open a shelter, or it's a severe weather-related incident, I think we do a very good job of pushing information out to the community with the Code Red system, social media, but one of the questions that we seem to scramble with is sign boards, we always seem to be, you know, can we call Southbridge for an extra sign board, or can we get sign boards, because although technology is great, depending on what the emergency is, that technology may not always be available and readily available to us. So, through some conversations, we reached out to the business community that had electronic sign boards, to see if they would be interested in partnering with us, that when we had an emergency, whether, again, we were opening a shelter in a long-term scenario, or maybe we had a major traffic incident where we were rerouting or detouring traffic for a several-hour period, it wouldn't be normal routine emergencies, but sort of those outside larger-type emergencies, would they be willing to assist us in leveraging their technology to inform the public? So there are 12 businesses in the community, and that does not include the sign board at the Auburn High School, or the sign board in front of the fire station, so there's 14 electronic sign boards, and then with the new Mass Pike boards that are going up, that would be a total of 16. But right now, there's 12 within the business community, 11 of which have the technology and the capability to assist us, the other business would love to help us, but the technology is just, it's older, and it's not able to do what it can do. So we've reached out to those businesses, all of them have expressed interest in helping. Currently, as of today, we have six businesses registered in the system, so what would happen is, let's say we needed to open a shelter today, we would, we have these businesses set up in a paging group, and we would page them, and they would get a text message and an email advising that we are making a request that they place the following information on their board, and that we would give them the specific information to place on their sign board. And then they would do that, and what that'll do is, and especially, you know, the majority of those boards, they're on Southbridge Street, they're on Washington Street, it'll give us a tremendous amount of coverage and be able to kind of leverage those communication devices to better spread the word, not only to the motoring public, but the residents of Auburn that are driving by those businesses. Although Jewelry Square is busy, not everyone drives through Jewelry Square and is able to see that sign board in the fire station. So if we can get additional boards between, you know, the two major highways, we felt that that was a tremendous addition, to be able to get emergency-type communication information out. Business community has been very great to deal with, they're very excited about being able to help us. I do want to recognize the six businesses that have provided the information to date, and that are in the system and are ready to go as of today, there's Pools and Q's, Colony Liquors, The Auburn Elks, Air Gas, Mass Discount Liquors, and Motorsports International. And I do expect, within the next two weeks, I'll probably have the other five, I will have their information back in the system, and they're ready to go, but these businesses are in the system, and if the need arose tonight, we would be able to leverage these assets tonight.
Can you wait for him this weekend?
Any comments? Yes, Mr. Bertheu.
I just want to thank those businesses and all the businesses for their continued support, that's a phenomenal idea, and great job getting that implemented, that's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming in.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, have a great night, take care.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
You as well.
Thank you both.
Okay, we're going to go back to Item 5D. Let's see.
This just came in to me.
Yeah, I did get that, actually, I did get a couple, thank you. We have a couple here tonight, we did get an extra one in tonight, but gift acceptances, according to the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The first one we got was from Michael and Kathleen Gabel, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U, for $100 to the Fire Rescue Department. Steven and Josie Trembley, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U, for $200 to the Fire Department gift account. Carol J. Loomis, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U, for $25 to the Fire Department gift account. And then, so I'll take those, well... Yeah, and then there's one more for the Fire Department, it's anonymous, $20 for the EMS Motor Unit account for the Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept with gratitude and extend our sympathies to the family of Carol Dunne U, and our thanks that they designated our Fire Department as a recipient of their, her memory.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And from Erica Aika, $600, and this is from the DPW, it's Boys Basketball Team in Auburn Recreation and Culture Boys Basketball Summer League, and that's going to the DPW, actually through Recreation Department.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude, and then a letter be prepared for the Chair to sign.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Let's see. Now we go to Item 5B, there's no proclamations or recognitions tonight, and now we have vote to appoint the election of officers for the 2019, 2020 year.
Make a motion that we appoint as provided by the town clerk, date is July 9th, 2029.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Let's see. Okay, I think that covers everything. All right, so what about Town Manager Items? We have a board vote to submit the draft legislation to the Legislature to amend Chapter 708 of the Act of 1963, per the vote of Town Meeting on May 7th, 2019. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you, I believe this is self-explanatory, but we put all the language in there, but just for those watching, the Town Meeting voted on May 7th of this year to allow us to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file legislation to change Chapter 708 of the Act of 1963 with regard to the Sewer Commission, and if you recall, the summary of it is a very brief language change, which was to eliminate the advertising requirement that was set up in the original legislation, to advertise any changes that the Sewer Commission makes, so if the Sewer Commission makes a revision to the regulations, and they're this thick, technically under the law, you have to advertise that entire regulation in the telegram gazette, I mean, it can't happen, but the law says we're supposed to do it, so it, this is just removing that requirement. So the Town Meeting did vote to have us do that, Town Council, Barbara Hennigan drafted this for us, and with the Board's authority, you now have authority with the Board's vote, we will send this to our legislative delegation and ask for their support for this legislation. And just please keep in mind, we did this recently for Faith Ave, and we had drafted and submitted it, and it does go through several reviews, it goes through the review of House Counsel, of Senate Counsel, so they may come back with amendments that they're going to ask the Board to do, in which case we'll bring them back to you again, but hopefully this is a simple enough item that that won't happen. So this is Attorney Hennigan's recommendation for submission, at least to get this process started.
Make a motion that we submit the draft legislation to the Legislature to amend Chapter 701 of the Act of 1963.
Do a second.
Second. No second for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Bertheu.
You said 701, is it 708?
I said 708.
You said 708.
Oh, I'm sorry, 708.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Okay, we've handled 6B and C, we're going to 6D now, update on the ongoing public safety facilities feasibility study.
Certainly, thank you, I just want to bring the Board up to date on where we are with the study, we, as you know, Town Meeting had approved of the $150,000 to be spent on the public safety feasibility study, to look at our three public safety facilities, our two fire facilities, and our police facility. We had to follow a very lengthy process through Mass General Law, we set up a design selection committee, which is a requirement, and we went through a whole series of interviews with them last summer, and the committee then recommended Tekton Architects to us, and we entered into a contract with Tekton Architects, I think October, early November of last year, and then they started on the project. The project is anticipated, I'm sorry, I need a longer neck or a longer, longer thing, I apologize, the project's anticipated to go a year, so we're hoping to have the final report from them in late October, early November. So what they've done so far has, under the scope of work, they're supposed to look at and evaluate and collect data on three buildings, existing conditions, what are the existing conditions of the police station, the fire headquarters, the West Street Fire Station, and also what are the needs of the current departments, and what do they anticipate the needs in the future to be, which is the hardest part. So they've done that type of analysis, and the three options that they had to look at were renovation of existing facilities, expansion of existing facilities, or new build for all three buildings, so whether it's a new build combination, a new build for one, a renovation for another, there were multiple options. So at this point, they are finalizing their preliminary options of layouts of properties, and how that would work, and where it would go, and we believe now is a good time to appoint a public safety feasibility review committee of residents to take a look at these options, and make a recommendation for what they feel is the option that we should be pursuing, and by pursuing, I mean, the next step under the scope of work with Tekton is to come up with a concept design, very preliminary conceptual design, so people could have an idea of what it would look like. We can't have them do it for 12 options, so we need to narrow those options down. So we, the other day, I think it was Friday, we put out, possibly Thursday, we posted a committee opening, we're seeking applications, we'd like to appoint seven residents to that committee, and then the committee are in... We'd like to appoint seven residents to that committee, and then the committee are in participation, as the committee would meet probably in August and September. A couple of times, look at, meet with Tekton, see all of the proposed options that they have, and vote to recommend one. It is still preliminary, whatever they recommend, then we do have to go back and have them do the concept design, which will be done, you know, October, November. So this isn't anything that would be any kind of formal recommendation regarding anything that would have to go to town meeting in the fall, other than we feel in the fall, we'd like to at least give town meeting an update on what's happened with the project at that point. So the committee is being put together. We'll get that appointed in the next couple of days, I hope. I think a week from Friday, I think is the application deadline. We want to give people an opportunity to see it, you know, vacations and all, people might not be around, but we did get quite a few applications within the first two days. So that's the plan, and we'll keep you updated, and those meetings will be public, so there's an opportunity for people to attend those meetings and see what Tekton has or will be coming up with.
Any comments? Well, I have one. I guess my concern is with new buildings, renovations, just upgrades, whatever they come up with. Have the police and the fire chiefs surveyed their men, surveyed the men and women of the two departments to see what their thoughts are on what they would like to see? The chiefs are going to be, I'm not there as long as these buildings are going to be, but there's firefighters that are in the buildings now, police officers that are in the buildings now, will be using these buildings for years to come, and I think their input is very, very valuable as to where they're going to go with the design, what they're going to put into these buildings, or how they can transform these buildings or renovate or whatever they're going to do with them. I think it's very, very important that we get police officers and firefighters input as to where these buildings are going to go and what they'd like to see in them.
Well, so there are two parts to that. The first part is that we have had an internal group that's been meeting with Tekton since they were first appointed, and the internal group that has met with them consists of a police lieutenant and the deputy fire chief. So both chiefs have assigned somebody else to be on that internal group, meeting with Tekton, not just them. So they do have input from their, from their command staff, and I assume the command staff is seeking input from the employees as well. But the second part of this is, of the seven-member committee that I'll be appointing, my intent is to encourage police and fire employees who are Auburn residents to apply for this committee, and I'd like to, I'd like to appoint one employee from the police department and one employee from the fire department. We can't go forward with this process without input from the fire department.
Right.
And from the police department. So you have to have that kind of input. So I'm hoping that we get interest from those who are Auburn residents, that we can appoint one of them from, one from each. So of the seven, we would have one representative from police, one representative from fire, to be able to voice, as you said, to be able to look at something and say, that really doesn't work, you know, I work through every day, we can't do that, or you can't do this. I think that's a critical piece. So that will be done through this advisory committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we go to, let's see, 6F. That's the update on the Eastland Partners' proposed housing development reserves at Ashworth Hill.
Yes, through the Chair. We discussed this the other day. I just thought it was important. They're not here tonight, and just to let the public know why they're not here tonight, because at the last meeting, we had said that they would be in again on July 15th. So just wanted everyone to know the reason that they're not here. So they will be here on August 12th. They are doing some additional analysis. They have determined that they would probably be coming in with a project that is 320 units, not 250 units, and as a result, we have asked them to attend DCG again with this increased units and to take another look at their data analysis and their impact analysis and update it for the additional units. It's a 30% increase in units, so I'm assuming there'll be increase on the impacts as well as increases on the revenues. So we've asked them to look at both. They're actually coming into DCG this Wednesday, the 17th, and they will be working on this for the next couple of weeks, and they will be coming into you on August 12th. So that is why they're not here, they're doing some additional data analysis. As soon as we have that analysis, after they meet with DCG this Wednesday, I will see how quickly they can update, make any changes to what they've already done that DCG is reviewing on Wednesday, and get it to you in advance of that August 12th meeting. We've also asked them to come in on August 12th and explain for you and for the public what the LIP process is. LIP being the Local Initiative Program, which is the so-called Friendly 40B. So we've asked them to come in and explain to the Board what that process is, what the Board's role would be, and just so you will have a better understanding of it. And then most likely, seeking a vote not in August, obviously, you're just going to learn about the whole process, but seeking a vote most likely at one of your meetings in September.
Okay, thank you. And I guess with August 12th coming upon us, they'll be back in, so if there's any questions you can think of or anything that you hear from the outside, bring them with you on the 12th of August, and we'll kick it around. Thank you.
And through the Chair, if I can add too, there was a walkthrough on Saturday at the request of the Board. A couple of Board members were interested in the walkthrough, and I believe that it was changed from nine to eight. So that is, you know, something else that they, that you would ask them to do that they didn't schedule for us.
Okay, thank you. We have no table items tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, was you, you have something?
No.
Okay. All right, Board of Selectmen member items. The first, discussion and potential vote to form a subcommittee to investigate ways to increase awareness and participation in our local elections. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, so I know we've all discussed it and our concern over the reduction in the numbers of people showing up to vote in our local election versus those who are qualified to vote. So I thought it might be time to take a look and see what not only this Board can do, but try and investigate ways in which we can reach out to the wider community as a town, honestly, as a Board, and see what ideas are out there to get people interested and aware of who's running, when it is, and why it's important to run in a nonpartisan, hopefully fun way.
Well, you know what, I appreciate the suggestion. We have a town clerk that's been, you know, she's been shining on the spot for all the elections. She puts out the signboards, the signboards are out, and Code Red is out, and you know what, I don't know how much more that she can do. She's well on it, and she's as frustrated, I think, as the rest of us that there are no, no participation to the voting. And I understand your concern, but I don't know if there's much more we can do without, and I'd hate to have this Board go forward and try to make some suggestions or get any ideas without talking to the town clerk first. I think it's, it'd be important for us to speak with the town clerk first and say, this is what our plan is, this is what we'd like to do, and we're as frustrated as you are about the low participation, and we'd like to put something together. So I would rather work with her first, ask her what her ideas are before we put something together here. My thoughts.
I have spoken to the town clerk, and she didn't raise any objections, and actually said that she would happily join in in further discussions to try and come up with ways. So preemptively, I did.
Can you?
Preemptively, I did chat with the town clerk. Having been a former registrar of voters myself, I'm well aware of the responsibilities of the town clerk. But we, as leaders of the community, need to occasionally step outside of maybe even our own comfort zones and try and lead and try and work with other elected officials and other community groups to try and get interest. No knock against the town clerk, I think the last two town clerks, and I'm sure if I go back in the Magic School Bus to Mrs. Proudey's time, I'm sure she worked very diligently to get people out. But I think we can offer leadership, I think it's sorely needed, and I think we would, the town would benefit from it. And if nothing comes of it, other than we learn a few things as members, I think it's time well spent, but it's up to the Board what they would like to do.
Mr. LaLeviti.
I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea to put this subcommittee together and either work with the town clerk or bring things back for us to consider as a Board, and I just wanted to express my interest as a Board member if we decide to move forward and create this subcommittee and serving on that subcommittee.
Who? Somebody?
Hey, we got through almost the whole meeting. We're turning out, so what happened? Must be dead time.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I agree that we absolutely need to increase participation in local elections, and I absolutely appreciate your comments about having a discussion with the town clerk. I would prefer to invite her into our next meeting, have this discussion, see, have a further discussion on what this subcommittee would look like, who would we reach out to, and also, and you just reminded me that you are a member of the Board of Registrazione, which this Board is the appointing authority. You know, I'm not sure what role they could play in this, but, you know, we may, so I would rather informing a subcommittee tonight, rather invite the town clerk into our next meeting. I mean, she's here till, if she's available, you know, they're here till 7:00 on Monday, and also make the Board of Registrazione available, I mean, aware that we're looking at this. But I absolutely agree that we need to increase voter participation in local elections, and I also agree that we are the leaders of the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Mr. Berthew.
I'll just reiterate what Ms. Goodrich said, that I'm definitely for this idea, and, but I would be definitely willing to wait and see what maybe the Board of Registrazione and the town clerk have for input.
Works for me.
Thank you.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we invite the town clerk and extend an invitation to the Board of Registrazione to attend our next meeting if they're available, and if not, they can apprise us of their availability. I don't think we're in any rush, so if, I know it's summertime.
Okay.
You know, if they're not available, then let them notify us when they would like to come.
So a motion for the registrazione and the town clerk for our next meeting on August 12th. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we have 8B, discussion and potential vote on a letter to be, excuse me, to be included with liquor license renewals. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Board members are aware, we send out the license renewals a little earlier than we do all end-of-year renewals. The liquor licenses renewals are due at the end of November, and of course, you know, looking to save costs, I would, I'm addressing this now so that any correspondence could be included in that mailing. But we are the licensing authority, I'm sure Board members here of, you know, different venues having entertainment, they may or may not need an entertainment license. I've spoken about a couple of them where they didn't need it, but I want to be ensure that we're being consistent with the entertainment licenses, the indoor and outdoor entertainment licenses, as well as extension of premises. And I say that, I am, I just love the thought of, you know, having these small little outdoor sitting areas, you know, to take a beverage outside. I can think of two right now who hold them, one being Halligans, who came in and showed a diagram, and they have an area that, you know, is contained to that area for outdoor consumption. And I believe the second is Jay Anthony's, who have their outdoor seating area. I don't have an objection with people, I just want to be sure that we're being consistent. So if there is a restaurant in town who's allowing people to bring a drink outside while they're waiting for a table, they may be required to have an extension of premises. And again, my thought is just being consistent with all our license holders.
Is there any other comments?
I'd make a motion to include the letter in the renewals this year.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
And just under discussion, I would trust the manager's language similar to this, and the reason I included, you know, personalizing it with Rachel, as she handles our licenses now, so, you know, they can reach out to her for some guidance as to what they may need.
Before we go for a vote, have you got any comments on?
I just want to make sure I heard the motion again. I just, did you hear, could you hear it? For some reason, we just didn't hear.
I'm going to include the letter, a letter of support suggested by Mrs. Goodrich in the liquor license renewals.
No.
Thanks, yeah.
That's for the, so the motion been made, and it's seconded. Is there any further discussion? Have you any comments? Okay. Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do, I do, not on that item, but I do have two things that I could just quickly mention.
Would you please?
We have a master plan survey. We have a master plan survey that is online, as well as we have left copies of it everywhere. We've also put it in the mailing of the tax bills. I believe the town planner, Adam Menard, told me he has over 320 that he's received so far, which is great. I think we have another couple of weeks, so we just want to put another push and another reminder that we're seeking input of residents by taking this survey. Again, you can do it online, or you can pick one up at any of the facilities, town facilities, so please do that. And a second thing, I want to thank everybody for all the work and effort and time that they put into the Independence Day event this year. It was, again, a beautiful event, the weather was absolutely perfect, and want to thank all our public safety officials and DPW officials and just police, fire, public health, everybody who really pulled together to pull this event off. Recreation and culture, I don't want to name any names because I'm afraid I'll leave someone off, but it's a major event that takes multiple scores of people who are involved in it. And want to thank our sponsors, because without the sponsors, we wouldn't be able to have such great programs. So we're grateful to WRTA, to Hometown Bank, to the Auburn Mall for letting us park, to Double A Transportation for the buses. So we figured, according to DPW and the police, they figure it was 11,000 or 12,000 people that attended, and it just was well-attended, beautiful event, and just want to thank everybody for everything they did to make it so successful. And to those of you who came, we appreciate it, I'm glad you came.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
My last thing was, just as we're sitting here, with the permission of the Board, I've thought about doing this before, and Mrs. Goodrich raises an excellent point. The license application that you use for your licensing authority for all the licenses, I'd like to take a shot at maybe making some proposed revisions and bringing it back to you to take a look at some specific things that are missing on here that might make it less confusing when an applicant comes in. There's no line specifically that defines the hours of the event, it asks for the hours of their operation, and they're not always the same. So I think there's some clarifications that we can put in the application that Mrs. Goodrich had raised before, and I think that's a great idea. The other thing I think she had raised is there's, oftentimes, there's no line in here for the date of the event. We ask for a description of the event, but we're really not just saying, what is the date of your event? And as you pointed out, this is saying Sunday through Saturday, 10 to 7:00. It's not a seven-day event. So I think we can make some recommendations to your application, but it is your application. So if we could do that and bring it back to you in a few weeks, give us a chance to take a look at it, and maybe come back with some recommendations, and if you approve it, you know, we'll start using that application. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. I think that'd be definitely an asset to the Board to kind of clarify a few of the little bit of things, information, so that they can put it on their application, so we're not going back and forth here to, we'll have that all spelled out.
No, that would be great, and I think that we, you know, and Rachel will probably be a very good person to look at this, as well as Sue, my office, and Sharon, because we're there when the applicants come in, and sometimes they're not quite sure what they're, they're actually filling out. So I think we have some insights as to what, but I also would ask the Board if there's anything that you have seen in this or noticed or want to take a look at it, and just let us know, and we'll try to incorporate it and try to make it a little more user-friendly for all of you. And it's not on here because this just came up this morning, but I do want to mention that. It looks like we're having a potential heat wave coming in this coming weekend. The last report I saw this morning was for 92 degrees on Friday, 96 on Saturday, and 92 on Sunday, and three days of excessive heat of 90 degrees or more constitutes a heat wave. And as we do every year when we have the And as we do every year when we have these, we don't always have them every year, but it looks like we're about to, we try to set up a cooling center at the senior center just to give residents an option to cool off, especially during the heat of the day. This isn't a shelter, it's nothing we need to do overnight, but we're looking to establish it on a Saturday and Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00. It doesn't really heat up till about noon time, and then those are the hottest, really the hottest hours. So I want to thank, I asked Jean Boulet, our senior center director, to see if she could get some volunteers to staff the senior center, and if she couldn't cover all those hours with some volunteers, we were going to reach out to CERT. And she did get back to me today and say that she has volunteers for those hours. So we're going to keep our eye on it. I wanted to make you aware and the public aware, forecasts change. If the forecast change, we may or may not need to go forward, or we may need to change those days. But right now, we're looking at the senior center staying open until 5:00 on Friday, so we've got some extended hours on Friday. And I believe it's also open Friday night for an event there anyway, so if someone needs to come in, they could. Then Saturday, 12:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00. We'll get notifications out through Code Red, we'll post it online. Just, you know, if just one person needs somewhere to go, it's important to do it for that one person. People who have allergies, there are a lot of medical conditions, without naming them, that it's very dangerous to have this, and it primarily affects young children and the seniors. So we're hoping that we get the word out to the people who really need the help.
Well, I guess I can never say it enough. We have, in this town, we've been very, very fortunate to have boards, committees, commissions doing our work to keep the town going, but it all comes back to our volunteers. Without our volunteers, we can't move forward. And I don't think they get enough of recognition, but I want to say thank you to all the volunteers out there. It does not go without saying the boards and commissions and committees, we appreciate all that you do, but the volunteers stepping up at a certain time, and it's always unscheduled. We appreciate all that you do, and thank you. Is there anything else from anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.